Let us pray. Father, we thank you for your presence here with us in this place. You are welcome. We pray for your blessings on matters at hand and show us how to conduct this meeting with a spirit of joy. Give us a desire to find ways to advance this city with peace. Our prayers for wisdom, for our leadership, for our mayor, our council people, that we may show compassion for one another and take heed that we who are leaders operate in deed as well as rules. Give us wisdom as you give us strength. Help us make decisive actions that meet the needs of those which we have leadership We thank you and give you honor and glory. And your space is always there in all the decisions that are made in this city, the city of Montgomery. That peace will be between all people of this city. And you said in your word, it is your desire that we prosper and be in good health, so as our soul prospers. So we thank you for that. As the city of Montgomery proclaim unity, peace, safety, wisdom, in your presence with us in all matters, we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Graham.
Council, any motion on the work session minutes for the 20th of April?
Move to adopt.
Have most adopt. On the favor, raise your hand.
Six with one abstention.
Any motion on the record council meeting minutes for the 20th?
President, move to adopt.
Have most adopt. On the favor, raise your hand.
Six with one abstention.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna start off with the executive summary. I wanna get to that point. I know we didn't do that in the last meeting, so I wanna make sure we address that and just kinda give the council an update on where things stand. I'm just gonna have four slides on the screen reflecting how revenue is trending for the city in terms of sales and use tax, lodging tax, gasoline tax, and alcohol and beverage tax. As you can see on this first slide, sales and use tax revenue is still reflecting positive growth year over year. Revenue from sales and use taxes increased for the month of April nearly 28% above the same period of fiscal year 2020. As you can see on the screen, this revenue stream has significant double-digit growth compared to where it was last year during the same period. The overall sales and use tax is up almost 11% year over year. This is an indicator that monies, the revenue received by the citizens from the most recent package passed by Biden administration are being put back into the local economy. That's a plus for all, for everyone involved in this, whether you're a citizen or whether you're a business owner. That's what we need to simulate the economy and that's what it was designed for. Next slide. Lodging tax revenue for the first time since the pandemic began has begun to trend upward, which is good again for our tourism industry, which we know provides a big boost to our economy. April had a positive growth rate of nearly 17% for the first time in a year. And this tax for fiscal year 2021 compared to the previous year still has a negative growth rate though of 31 and a half percent. Since we are only halfway through the fiscal year, we are hopeful that the city will see overall positive growth on lodging tax revenue by the time we get to the end of the fiscal year or September 30th. Next slide, please. Gasoline tax revenue had a positive growth rate in April that was slightly less than 9% over April 2020. Year over year, gasoline tax revenue has a negative growth rate of more than 3%. As tourism increases in the city, this tax should also continue to trend upward over the next six months. Now to my final slide. The alcohol and beverage use tax revenue had a positive growth rate of 5% in April compared to the previous year. So essentially, overall, year over year, the alcoholic beverage tax revenue continues to trend upward with a positive growth rate of nearly 6%. So people are still getting together, they're still purchasing spirits, they're still utilizing that, whether it be in the restaurants, certainly not as much, but that number and that pattern is trending versus people kinda doing that privately at their home and other venues as well. Additional information, just to share kinda as a heads up, I have projections on those revenues and collections in total, how they are trending compared to last year and the next council meeting. So we'll do a little bit more year-over-year analysis. I won't bury in the details of that right now, but I did wanna make sure that we touched on it since I didn't highlight that last month, I'm sorry, last, last, last meeting. Now, I'll move on to some other high points in the message tonight, and I'll be pretty brief. I wanna start with where the pastor left off, and that is certainly wanna think about and continue to pray for the family of Reverend Ebak Samars, someone who dedicated a lot of time, not only to First Baptist Church, but really being ambassador for this city. He served 20 years as the chaplain for the Montgomery Police Department. He also been the senior pastor at First Baptist Church for well over 47 years. And I think when we consider where we are today, earlier, we had the opportunity to meet with Congresswoman Terry Sewell and her staff to celebrate the 60th anniversary of the Freedom Riders. And what took place at that time was really an egregious application of responsibility by the police department at that time. You had 21-year-olds and 22-year-olds, essentially college students, coming here to uphold the federal laws and attest those laws in nonviolent protest. And when they got to the city of Montgomery, the police escort left the Greyhound bus to travel on its own. So when they got to the Greyhound bus station, they were met by 200 members of the Ku Klux Klan. I don't know if anything needs to be said, but it didn't turn out too well for those Freedom Riders. And we mark today of the 10-year anniversary of turning that bus station into a museum, and some of you were a part of that. And as Judge Myron Thompson said, really a memorial. Those Freedom Riders were to come here and they were sheltered over at First Baptist Church. That was a church that also Reverend Dr. Ralph Abernathy led for a number of years. And so I think it's, you know, poetic justice that today we're talking about the legacy of Reverend Ebak Samars, who for a number of years gave the Sunday message during the Faith and Politics Tour that brought leaders here, bipartisan leaders, CEOs, and other very influential people to learn more about the civil rights movement and to learn more about the progress that has been made. Well, on Sunday mornings, anytime John Lewis and many members of the United States Congress would be here, senators, congressmen and women, many staffers and others, Reverend Mars would give a great sermon to them about not only the history of First Baptist Church, not only the history of the Freedom Riders, but also the history of Montgomery and his time growing up here and then becoming the pastor at First Baptist Church. And so although we remember him as the chaplain of the Montgomery Police Department, others will remember him as the longtime pastor at First Baptist Church. I think it's important for us to understand that he was also an ambassador for this city, to many of the nation's most powerful decision-makers. And so I just wanna say that we're praying for his family, including his wife, Rebi. We're also praying for his children and the entire police department, who we counseled at different times, families that he had to counsel as well, and the men and women who protect and serve this community. And so we thank him and his family for sharing his belief in God, his belief in Jesus Christ with this city and sharing that with many others beyond our community. So I'm glad that we had a moment of silence, but I think that his leadership and legacy will go far beyond even his number of years that he served faithfully to First Baptist Church on Ripley Street. Now, I wanna transition to medical news and that's regarding our vaccination outreach and COVID-19 updates. So far, so good. We're nearing 40%, which is higher than our neighbors in Mobile and Tuscaloosa Counties, but a little bit lower rate than those in Jefferson and Madison Counties. So we know that we have a little bit more work to do, and we've engaged with a number of organizations that will be helping us get the word out to the community about why it's still important for everyone to be vaccinated. We also know that very soon teenagers, at least those that are older than, I think 12 and older, so I shouldn't say just teenagers, 12 and older will be also eligible for the vaccine in the coming weeks. We've had 113, 576,000 doses administered in Montgomery County. Nearly 68,000 people have received one or more doses. Black residents account for 38% of those vaccinated, while white residents account for 31% and Asian residents account for 5%. Nearly 30% of Hispanic residents in Montgomery County have been vaccinated. And so we are getting there, but it doesn't mean that we can get out of the boat just yet and get on land. We've still got a little ways to go in this storm, and so we just kinda wanna keep that in mind. So we wanna continue to share the news with not only all of our residents, but the general public, that while we're getting, we're making progress and we're getting some positive returns, we still have people who have some concerns. And I understand that we may never reach 100%. I get that. But I do wanna make sure that those who have been challenged due to transportation, have been challenged by things that they may be hearing, have been challenged by other issues, understand why it's important for them to still be vaccinated. There's talk about how we will get back to normal in our economy, in our restaurants, in our social being, in our houses of worship, in our schools. This helps us get there. And so we wanna make sure that we do a little better than where we are right now. And we're working with Walmart to set up smaller pop-up clinics at sites where the Montgomery Housing Authority operates, community centers, and more in vulnerable areas. And so we believe this will lead to even more direct outreach, and we wanna challenge all of you again to continue to amplify that message as we move forward. So we're doing good, we can do great, let's continue to shoot for great as best we can. And let's understand that again, all of us are ready to be able to put our masks down and we're ready to get back to full range of doing all the things that we were doing prior to this, but we're still a little bit short. So we hope that we'll continue to get there real soon. Now, and this is my last topic, I've got some good news for a change. And that is that I was with Congresswoman Terry Sewell today, who was presenting the city of Montgomery with a gift. And we have a member of her staff here, Melinda Williams. I'm gonna ask Melinda to come up to share a little bit of information with us. And so I'll let Melinda speak a little bit, and then I'll finish my talking points on this all-important gift that you have for us once you're done. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Good evening.
City Council, wonderful residents of the city of Montgomery. My name is Melinda Williams. I am the district director for Congresswoman Terry Sewell, who proudly represents the 7th Congressional District, parts of Montgomery, most of Montgomery, and that may change in the near future, Jefferson County, her hometown of Selma, Alabama, and all of the black belt, 14 counties. And the American Rescue Plan, as many of you know, was passed by Congress March 21st of this year. And many of us started to see the impacts or the results of the American Rescue Plan. Shots in arms, which was vaccination, additional money for, to crush the COVID virus, direct money, that $1,400 that many people received who made under $150,000 in a household, and direct funding to cities and counties. From the CARES Act, as the Congresswoman said earlier today, she heard from her mayors. Mayor Reed, Mayor Woodfin, Mayor Reed called, talked to her many times, and said, "We need direct money." The CARES Act money, the cities and the counties had to go through a reimbursement process. They had to spend the money and then get it back. So with the American Rescue Plan, that money is directly to cities and counties. And today, the Congresswoman was with the mayor, along with the Montgomery County Public School of Officials and the state superintendent, along with Ann Ramore, our superintendent here in Montgomery. And we presented a check, and I think they, yeah, they got the check. So the city of Montgomery is receiving in two tranches. The first tranche of money will come the end of May, and it has, and then the next money will come the end of May of 2022. Now, all of the money has to be spent by the end of 2024. There is provisions and guidelines on the money, as we all know, but the idea is to have cities and counties restored back to pre-COVID operation. So the city of Montgomery, $42 million, $42,140,000 in direct funds from the American Rescue Plan.
I wanna thank Melinda Williams, who serves as the Congresswoman's district coordinator for being a very key point of contact for us. The mayors, not only here in Alabama, but across this country, where we're very adamant, very upfront with the new administration. And I wanna thank the presidential administration for this. This doesn't happen every five years, every 10 years with every president. This is a once-in-a-generational, once-in-a-generation investment. And we plan to be accountable, we plan to be responsible for it, and we plan to make sure that we treat it as something that's all of ours, it's the community's. It's not mine, it's not the council members, it's all of ours to invest wisely. And so we'll be having some conversations with many of you to try to get feedback about where you'd like to see us invest this money. Because we wanna make sure that as a city, we take what's been given to us directly this time, and we invest it in a way that provides the returns that we all are looking for. And so I thank Congresswoman Sewell for her support. She was the only congressional member to vote for this plan. Everybody's gonna use the money, but she was the only one to support this plan, she was the only one to support this domestic investment, she was the only one to support the investment in cities and towns, and she was the only one to support the initiative of the Biden administration, who understood exactly what issues cities are dealing with and what issues many of our citizens need in order to get back on their feet. So I just wanna thank you, Melinda, and please tell Congresswoman Sewell as well, thanks for her advocacy and her leadership. Now, as I take my seat, I just wanna acknowledge a few of our high schools for being listed among the top 20 high schools according to some latest national rankings. U.S. News World Report came out with their best high schools, and we had three again here that were listed among Alabama's top 20 high schools. That's pretty good when you have three out of the top 20, Mr. President. So Lamp, BTW, and Brew Tech are all listed among Alabama's top 20 high schools, with Lamp earning recognition as the number-one public high school in the state. So we wanna thank those students, those teachers, and those fans for that. And I would just conclude by thanking all those teachers and educators for the work that they do, as this is National Teachers Appreciation Week. So let's make sure that all of us who are here, even in our own capacity, show a good example for the young people and find a teacher that we can thank for us being here, for what they did for us at a time when we probably were worse than anybody sitting in this audience or anybody listening on the phone may have been, for all the hell we raised and all the trouble we caused. Let's thank a teacher sometime this week for the work they did. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Before we get started, Mayor, our mask ordinance runs out or expires on May the 9th, and I've gotten numerous calls today, and I just thought we ought to touch on it, that we will not renew that mask ordinance as of May the 9th.
Right.
That's correct?
Yes, not as of May the 9th.
Okay.
Ms. Graham, you have a performance by...
Yes. Yes. That's My Child will come up and perform for us. We gotta do a little arranging, so give us a second.
Go ahead, do your...
They have a microphone. Go ahead and use that microphone and let them move this out the way. Somebody had, one of the young ladies have a microphone, just use that microphone she has. Yeah.
Good afternoon.
To our esteemed councilman, our mayor, and everyone in attendance, I would like to thank you so much for giving me the time to speak to you guys about a pressing matter, which is our youth here in Montgomery. I wanna send a special shout-out to Councilor Graham for allowing us this space, as well as District 3's own, Marshay Johnson. My name is Jason Brooks, and I represent That's My Child, we're a youth organization that mentors the youth through arts, education, and workforce development. Part of our mission is to end economic depravities in our community. One of the ways that we do that is our Team to Work program. It's a nine-week course that teaches teens how to work a job, how to fill out a job application, but it provides much more than that. It provides confidence, team building, and it also provides a paycheck. This program has been one of the hallmarks of what we do here, really mentoring the youth through job force development. But many of you have already heard about the work that Charles Lee and many of the people here at That's My Child have done. Some of you know, Mr. Lee recently lost his mother, who was a founding member of That's My Child. And it got me to thinking, what would this community look like without a Charles Lee, without a That's My Child? And I started thinking about the 250 students that would never receive job readiness training, 160 students that would never receive training in the performing arts. Our community is better off with programs like That's My Child's Team to Work program and any others. But it's enough to hear it from me and see it on the internet, it's another thing to hear it from the parents. So tonight, I want to invite one of our signing students' parents up, Mr. Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, City Council and resident.
Good evening.
My name is DJ Atkins, and I'm here to speak to you today on the impact of a local program and what it has on my family. I'm the proud parent of Aria Hill, 16, Sur Hill, 14, and their graduates of That's My Child. Oh, okay. And their graduates of That's My Child. The story of my family before That's My Child is far different than after the completion of the program. Before my kids, they were pretty much introverts, and they didn't have many friends to speak of, and they kept to themselves. They were prone to procrastination, and they lived in their own worlds, like a lot of the youth I see in today's time. They were more interested in social media than school, more of what you can do for me attitude than what I can do to help. But Mr. Lee, Mr. Jason, and the staff of TMC changed all of that. I'm not only speaking of as a parent of these wonderful kids, but also as a product of Montgomery. Born and raised here, our options were limited as youth, and we were encouraged in areas of sports and arts. But from our personal experience, we were lacking anything to allow us to apply and excel in the working environment at a young age, which is the path that most people from our everyday world begin and end their adolescence and adult life. With That's My Child, those days of figuring it out are all over, and I have watched my kids blossom before my eyes. They have been blessed with the opportunity to shape their futures and contribute even before they can drive, vote, or go to the military. They are safe and they are confident, and I watch as they excelled on all levels and developed into pillars of this community. They showed their leadership every day while working at Crab Kings, and Aria was just promoted to Expo Manager in only two weeks' time. Quite the accomplishment for anyone, but with laser focus, she was able to do it at the age of 16. Y'all proud, that don't even describe how I feel right now. See, I was taught that in Montgomery, we was a melting pot of ideas and a birthplace of change, because we that city. So what better place to do what That's My Child is doing than here? If it's not us, then who? It's our blood, our history, and then our roots. I implore that the board be a bridge to change and help broaden the reach of these helping hands. And I'd like to thank That's My Child personally, and I'd like to thank all of you for your time and your ears. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, it's something powerful about a parent telling you how proud their child, how proud they are of their child, and that's one case. But, you know, it's something to hear from an employer, somebody that's bringing revenue to the city. And so I wanted to present to you guys, Mr. Karen Coe, who is the owner of the Crab Kings establishment, to talk about his perspective and what this program has done for his business and for his community.
My name is Karen Coe, co-owner of Crab Kings. My wife is actually the other owner. She usually does all the speaking, but she's not feeling well today, so I'm filling in. I can't tell you how proud I am to have actually had the opportunity to hire from That's My Child, one of the first things that we did when we moved here. I'm actually a product of BTW Magnet High School, but I left about nine years ago, and I came back to open a business here, because we really believe in, you know, this city, and we believe in actually making change, not just making money. So the first thing that we did was actually reach out to different community organizations, and we wanted to know how can we help and how can we be a part of making positive change in this city. One of the first ones that we heard of was That's My Child, and we were anxious to meet with them. We toured their facility, and we were just blown away by what they do there. We could see in the kids' faces what it meant to them while we were there, and we couldn't help but, you know, get involved. So we actually do mock interviews with them. We're a part of the organization, we partner with them, and we're lucky enough to, you know, have a chance to hire from there. We believe in paying well, way better than everybody else. We believe in paying well, way better than everybody else, and we believe that that's a part of, you know, the businesses, the businesses part in making change of this city. So, yes, we did just promote Araya. We also have her brother, Sir. We also hired two other kids, and they've just been outstanding, actually top performers in our organization. And just want to say also, thank you to the parents, thank you, Mr. Atkins, thank you to Charles, thank you to Jason, for this opportunity for us to be a part of this city as well. Thank you.
A few moments ago, the mayor talked a little bit about the numbers and what it really means to have a legacy here in Montgomery. And so, I ask you, what is our legacy that we're leaving behind for the next generation? Besides money, besides the numbers, what are we leaving behind tangible to these youngsters? And so, another part of what we do here is confidence building, and I wanted to present our performance tonight by our Performing Arts Club with a song and a dance by two of our captains, if you will.
I thought it was just a performance, that enough?
Our humble counsel, Mayor of Montgomery, we stand on the shoulders of heroes like John Lewis and many others that came before us, and we ask that you will stand with us as we honor heroes this May 6th, this Thursday, at 6:30, at our Hot Dogs and Heroes event. We wanted to honor you guys tonight by presenting a few awards for some of our heroes in the room. Please present those awards. Please give it up for our mayor, Mayor Stephen Lee. Please give it up for our councilmen. We appreciate you. We want to personally invite you, we want to welcome you into what we do here at That's My Child, this Thursday, at our Hot Dogs and Heroes Gala Event, 6:30. And we would also like to invite you into our home to continue this work, continue this mission, to push our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, that's great. Okay, Matt Clark, first item?
Mr. President, Item 1, Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14.
I think we're going to withdraw this, Mr. President.
Yes. President, we will be withdrawing.
Item 2, Resolution Improving Issuance of Business License to the Uvar Grill &amp; Inc., 163 Eastern Boulevard.
Motion to adopt. Any motion to adopt from Item 2?
Mr. President.
We've already talked to him? Motion to adopt? You say it?
Yeah. Mr. President, move to adopt.
Okay, hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous, I'm sorry. Six, abstain?
No.
A no vote?
Yes, ma'am.
We've got one no vote, six yeses and one no.
All right, number, next item?
Item 3, Ordinance Amending Chapter 12, Division, Section 1231, 12131, 12135.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to move to carry it over for two weeks, we still working on some language in the, in the ordinance.
Okay, very good.
Item 4 is canvassing the returns of the District 3 Special Election Council. Today at noon, we met with the Board of Registars, there were seven provisional ballots, only five were deemed eligible. All of those went to Adrienne Larkin, but Mrs. Marsha Johnson was still declared winner.
Okay.
And we have that resolution before you now to canvass those returns.
Okay. Any motion to suspend the rules on this resolution?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adopt.
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Do you have one?
Then next, we have one more resolution, Resolution Presenting the Certificate of Election to Marsha Johnson, District 3 Council.
Mr. Marsha, do you want us to do this?
Sure. Hey, motion to suspend rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules.
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Welcome aboard.
Now, we will have the oath of office for Mrs. Marsha Johnson. She will be sworn in by Attorney Shaw.
Can do it.
No, use that button. Yeah. Take a mess out of it. Didn't pull the close to you.
(Laughter).
(Inaudible).
Okay. I'm a woman, Marsha Johnson, you're a good afternoon.
Yes.
I'm Marsha Johnson.
I'm Marsha Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Alabama.
And of the state of Alabama.
That I will.
That I will.
In all respects.
In all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance.
In the city.
In the city.
Of Montgomery.
Of Montgomery.
That will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Councilwoman.
The duties of the Office of Councilwoman.
So, help me God.
So, help me God. Thank you.
(Applause).
Brendan, we got to sign everything?
We've already signed.
We already signed?
Thank you. Have your seat.
Okay. Hey, I'll go for a second. Okay. We'll turn it over.
Welcome to the team, Marsha. All right, next item on the agenda.
Item 6, Resolution Authorizing a Show Cause Hearing for Southeast Pallett, 5496 Washington Ferry Road.
Okay, this resolution needs to suspend the rules and then amend it, okay? Need a motion to suspend the rules on Item 6?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move to suspend the rules?
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
We got a substitute, don't we?
Unanimous.
Mr. President?
Substitute?
We need a motion to adopt, then a motion to substitute.
Move to adopt.
And motion to adopt, to substitute, hold on, if I?
Motion to substitute, I need the second motion to a substitute.
Right, I got that one.
Okay, unanimous?
And now, vote on the main motion?
To adopt a substituting.
Substituting, hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Mr. President?
Substitute?
We need a motion to adopt, then a motion to substitute.
Move to adopt.
And motion to adopt, to substitute, hold on, if I?
Motion to substitute, I need the second motion to a substitute.
Right, I got that one.
Okay, unanimous?
And now, vote on the main motion?
To adopt a substituting.
Substituting, hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Okay.
Resolution is adopted.
Very good. And number 7?
Next councilman?
Yes, the hearing will be May the 18th at 2:00. Item 7, Application for Retail Beer and Retail Table Wine, Off Premises Only, Doing Business as Quick Serve at 4200 Carmichael Road.
And motion to suspend rules?
Mr. President, move to suspend the rules?
Got to have a public hearing.
Your name to the record, sir?
Most of our children.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item here or on the phone, please call in and talk at this point. Seeing none, a public hearing's been held, it's part of the council.
Move to adopt.
And motion to suspend the rule?
Yes.
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir. Thank you.
Item 8, Application.
Oh, he's got the next one, too.
Application for Retail Beer and Retail Table Wine, Off Premises Only, Doing Business as Quick Serve at 4101 Troy Highway.
This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward or call in on the phone. Seeing none, hearing none, a public hearing's been held, part of the council, need a motion?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Item 9, Application for Lounge Retail Liquor Class 1 License, Doing Business as Hookah House at 105 North Burbank Drive.
Your name to the record, sir?
Barry Robinson, owner.
Okay, Gary, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward or call in on the phone. Seeing none, hearing none, a public hearing's been held, part of the council, need a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Thank you.
Item 10, Pursuant to Section 1153B1, Code of Alabama, Authorization of Demolition of Unsafe Structures at the Listed Locations.
Need a motion to uphold?
Mr. President, move to uphold.
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous. Item 11, Resolution Assessing the Cost of Abatement of Unsafe Structures on Various Lots.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, need a motion to suspend the rule on this.
For the remainder of the agenda?
Yeah. Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, I have a person who wants to speak on item number 12, Crystal Reisner. Crystal Reisner, are you here? Crystal Reisner. Okay, all right, need a motion to?
Item 12, Resolution Declaring Authorizing Assessing Cost of Abatement of Public Nuisances on Various Lots.
President, move to adopt.
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Okay.
Counsel, I do have contingency funds that have not been approved by the mayor that I need to read for you. For District 4, $5,000 to Makoah, and $2,500 for March of Dimes Senior Pledge Campaign, also, $2,500 to the Y for the Achievers Program. For District 5, $1,500 to South Long Bell and Graff Neighborhood Association, $1,500 to Southern League Baseball, $2,000 to YMCA for Montgomery Basketball League, $1,500 to Swan's Organization. And District 8, $300 to Southern League Baseball, and $1,000 to Stirbridge Neighborhood Association. And, Mr. Mayor, these are all.
Provened?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I have two more, $1,500 to Mercy House, and what was that number, that district? $2,500 for the Empowering Future Leaders Y Achievers Program.
Achievers for the YMCA Achievers?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I have one.
Yes.
YMCA Achievers Program, $1,000. Come on to the plate, man.
Okay, anybody else? Motion to adopt?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move for approval?
Hold on, if I raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Anybody got anything else to discuss?
Mr. President? I have one thing, 3409 Whitley Road is a car wash that we've been having problems with. Want to do a show cause.
Okay. Good idea, I have it. We'll set it up.
I will get a resolution on the next agenda setting the show cause.
Okay, anybody else? Meeting adjourned.